I'd like the call to be in order. Roll call.
Roger Updike Grove.
Here.
Mr. Zawada.
Here.
Mr. Brophy.
Here.
Ms. Duroff. Mrs. Kratz.
Here.
Ms. Nyman.
Here.
Mrs. Scott.
Here.
Mr. Brad Updike Grove.
Here.
Mr. Panarolo.
Here. If we could all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance in a moment of silence.
I would like to lead the citizens of the United States of America and the jury of honor for which she stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and all.
The Board of School Directors held an executive session prior to the April 8, 2025 meeting. Topic was legal. The session lasted approximately forty minutes long.
Takes us down to our discussion information section. I'd like to welcome the Boyer Town community to this evening's Committee of the Whole Meeting. We do have a robust agenda this evening, a lot of information to share, so we're going to get into those discussion items this evening as quickly as possible. Again, my name is Scott David Heiser. I'm the superintendent here in Boyer Town. I'd like to welcome all of our guests in person and those watching on the YouTube video this evening. So we're going to begin with a 2023-24 audit. It will be a presentation in which our auditors will be presenting virtually. I'm going to turn things over to Mrs. D'Anicola to make some introductions.
Good evening, everyone. Tonight, our auditor, Mr. Kowalczuk, will be presenting the, his opinion of the June 30, 2024 audit.
Good evening. Thank you all for having me on tonight. I'm delighted to be here presenting the results of our audit for the year ended June 30, 2024. We were on site with the district late in the fall and through the winter, assessing the internal controls and processes as well as a number of transactions of the district, all for the purpose of providing a result on the audit. And I'm pleased to tell you that based on our testing, we found your financial statements to be fairly presented. We're issuing what's called a clean or unmodified opinion on the financial statements. Additionally, because you expend more than $750,000 in money that originates at the federal government level, you're subject to additional governmental auditing and single audit rules. This year, the programs that were selected for testing for your single audit were your IDEA special education funding, as well as the child nutrition cluster, which is the National School Lunch Program and Breakfast Program. I'm pleased to let you know the results of our compliance testing identified no deficiency, no material weaknesses, significant deficiencies, or other reportable matters, either in compliance with the major programs or in your internal control processes. So overall, a clean opinion across the board. Looking at the financial results for the year, this was a year where the district was able to leverage some better-than-expected results in a couple areas to, to help enhance its future. For anybody that had, has everybody received a copy of the audit, or should I put a couple pages up on the screen?
The audit is in Board Docs. Would anybody like to see it on the screen as well? Jeff, if you can, and share your screen.
Yeah. Okay. Where I do the right screen looks like it. So looking at your, what everybody's always the most curious about is the general fund budget. And you'll see that for the year ended June 30, 2024, the district, them here, was able to add about $7 million to its fund balance in the general fund. And when we look at what the draws were there, the biggest one you'll see is earnings on investments. Last spring, as you, as your district and all other districts were working on putting together the budgets, the general sentiment was that earnings on investments and interest rates were going to go down sooner rather than later. So this is an area where really across the board throughout the state, we saw districts perform well above expectations in earning us on investments. Rates are starting to come down, so this isn't a revenue source that we'll fully be able to rely on in future years. Though while it was available, it is an area that the district was able to, to generate some funds for future uses. You'll see other taxes is an area that was also above budget. And a lot of other taxes are really dependent on activity by people within the district, and they're very temperamental, and we see swings in these areas. So the district, as is an appropriate budgeted conservatively, this was a year where the, the results exceeded the prudent of budgeting, and as a result, you were able to, to see a positive variance in that area.
Jeff, excuse me, Jeff. Jeff, if I can interrupt you just one second. Your screen is not sharing, so we're not able to see that. So if you-
You know what happened? I shared-
There you go. Now it's, now it's up.
Yeah. I, I moved it, and I didn't realize that I shared the screen, so I'm going to move my camera over here, so that I'm looking at you still.
Okay, great. And if you could just reference the page that you're on, that would be helpful for, for everyone.
Page nineteen, if you're using the page numbers at the bottom, it's PDF page twenty-three. And the last area I wanted to show was federal sources, which you will see was about $1.5 million over the budgeted amount. Now, unlike a lot of other areas, federal sources is really a dollar in, a dollar out. So any increase you see there is offset by an increase in expenditures. So that really doesn't impact your bottom line, except that when you're able to use federal funding to cover expenditures you have, it relieves pressure on your local and state sources. And this was really the last year that asset funding was a significant portion of your available resources, so that's why you see that increase. It was really not the expenditure available and associated asset funding. On the expenditure side, you'll see the district was able to see savings in certain areas such as regular programs, while seeing overages in others such as special programs. There were savings in expenditures which were used by the district to fund transfers into your capital funds to manage your long-term needs. So you'll see that the, the transfers and the savings from expenditures largely equal out, and so really the, the driving change in your fund balance was that revenue side. As I mentioned, so looking at your funds, more holistically, you'll see that the district ended the year with about $10 million in unassigned general fund fund balance. This is the, the money that is really available for the district to use. Now, much of this, just because of the timing of funds, is used in July and August to fund before your taxes come in, but that's what was available as of June 30, 2024. The remaining fund balance that you see there was either assigned, committed, or restricted by the district. The majority of it is for capital projects and capital needs of the district, including your technology reserve fund, although you did have a portion that was committed for Peasars support, because as we know, Peasars rates continue to be historically high, as well as to fund future budgets they will eventually. As you likely know, the district reports in two different ways. So we've been talking about the fund level, which is what you budget based on, and if they modify it a cruel basis, which looks at near-term financial resources and uses. The district also reports on a full accrual, which we call the entity-wide basis, and this looks at the district in how you may look at a business, where all capital assets are reflected as assets, all of your debt are reflected as liabilities. And as I mentioned, Peasars continues to be the largest single liability of the district. The number did go down, and so you're going to see that if you compare this to prior years, but as of June 30, 2024, your net pension Peasars liability is about $163 million. As I've mentioned in previous years, this isn't really something you're able to offset. This is just a recognition for bondholders and other users of the financial statements, that this is your district's proportioned share of the gap that Peasars is working to close. We've seen a little bit of an improvement in the rates, in, in the, the funding percentage that we anticipate, because of the structural changes that Peasars has made in the last five years, that as the years go on, we're going to see that start to close. You'll see the district ended the year on an entity-wide basis with an overall net deficit of about $57.14 million. By the way, this is PDF page seventeen, our copy page thirteen. But that was an improvement of about $20 million from the prior year. And the reason that number is so different from the other pages is certain things like the purchase of a capital asset is an expenditure at the fund level, but it is turning cash asset into building asset at the entity-wide level, so it doesn't decrease your, your net income for the year as a whole. At this point, I don't want to go too far into the numbers, because I know especially in the entity-wide, they can be a little murky as to how much they really mean to, to the district, to the board, as opposed to some of those fund level numbers. But I do want to open it up for any questions you may have. And I'm going to stop sharing so that I can see you all.
Who picks and chooses the accounts that you audit?
I'm sorry, what was that? I'm having a little trouble hearing. I do apologize.
Who picks and chooses the accounts that you go in and audit?
I'm sorry. One more time, I can really only hear what, what you're the-
Who picks and chooses the accounts that you audit? Who picks and chooses the accounts that you audit?
Jeff, the question was, who picks and chooses the accounts that you audit?
Oh, okay. Thank you. So there is, the, the short answer is, it's our audit team. We have a process by which we perform a number of interviews, as well as analytical testing of the district as a whole, to identify places where there's opportunity for a higher-than-normal risk of misstatement, or where there may be significant changes, whether it's in the numbers, or the, the way the district processes transactions. So we select them for a higher level of testing, but then we use haphazard, as well as statistical sampling methodologies to identify the specific transactions. There are some things, like taxes, that we will always work to confirm with your tax collectors, and should test aggressively because of their significance to the district. The state also always provides a confirmation that we're able to use to test all of the state balances. So those are, there's some accounts like that that are always tested, and then beyond that, certain controls, whether we pass payroll more in depth this year, or other expenditures more in depth, we have some different cycling and other methodologies that we use.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Jeff, I don't hear any, any further questions. I appreciate you taking the time to share some of the bigger pieces to the audit.
Absolutely. Thank you so much for having me on. It's always a pleasure to, to get to deliver good news and to speak with you all.
All right. Thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you, too.
Okay, that segues us into Item B, which is a finance presentation. So Mrs. D'Anicola, I'm going to turn that section over to you.
Tonight, I would, I would like to provide an update to the 2025-26 budget, and provide some overview of what has happened in the past as far as budgetary-wise, district overview, talk about some key mandated costs, and then go into the details of our 2025-26 budget. As you know, we're approaching the timelines of which we need to start doing some approvals on that budget. From a district demographic perspective, our general fund budget supports the enrollment of 6,293 students, which includes elementary students of 2,704, secondary students of 3,640, 54 pre-K count students, and approximately 75 virtual academy students in our BASD Virtual Academy. The budget also supports employees of 760 employees, of which 30 are administrators, 474 are teachers. We currently have about nine long-term substitutes. We have 95 full-time support staff, 102 part-time support staff, six support supervisory staff members, and then we also have contracted services for our teacher substitutes and paraprofessionals through Kelly Services. We have approximately 46 teacher substitutes, and through Crest, we have 156 paraprofessionals. We also contract for a number of mental health supports and social workers. They are also on a contracted basis. So our overall budget supports all of those positions and all of those students. I'm going to review the real estate tax history. Act One Index, just to refresh everybody's memory, is the limit by which we could raise taxes as a school district. So for, going back to 2017-18, the district's Act One Index was 3.1%. At that time, the district increased taxes 3.09%. In the next two years, 1819 and 1920, the district had an adjusted Act One Index of 2.9 and 2.8. The district in those years increased taxes above that index because they qualified for special exceptions, which would be increased expenditures in certain approved areas. The tax increase in 2018-19 was 5.4%, and 1920 was 3.64%. Since 2021-22, through this most recent year, 2024-25, the district's had a tax increase of 3%. The Act One Index has ranged from 3.7% to 6.4%, but the district has maintained a 3% tax increase in each of the last four years. The 3% tax increase in 2024-25 was a milliliter increase of just under one. It was .924 mils, which gave us a tax rate of 31.738 mils. From a tax collection history, I'm pleased to report that, you know, the community continues to support at a high level the district's students. In 2017-18, at assessed value of roughly 2.6 million, we had a collection rate of 97%. In the most recent year, 2024-25, the assessed value was 2.8 million, and at a milliliterate of 31.738 mils, results in an adjusted tax levy of $86,729,493. That adjusted tax levy is adjusted for the homestead/farmstead relief that is given by the state that we then return to taxpayers. We had collections of $84,631,564, so a collection percentage of 98%. So again, very strong collection percentage in our community. The real estate tax impact after that homestead/farmstead relief is applied, looking at historically what that relief has been and what the impact to the community taxpayer is, in 2017-18, real estate taxes, based on a property assessed at $150,000, would have been $3,753, but after that homestead/farmstead relief, the annual, it would drop it to $3,613.42, so an annual increase over the prior year of $46.42. In our most recent year, 2024-25, it was a milliliterate of 31.738. On a $150,000 property assessment, that would be real estate taxes of $4,760.70, but after applying the homestead/farm relief, the tax bill would be $4,583.74, so an increase from the prior year of $138.60. We have not released for two, we have not been informed yet for 2025-26 what the available homestead/farmstead relief will be. We will receive that from the state in the beginning of May. When we receive that, we will calculate what the tax relief for each eligible property will be, and we'll share that with the board. The homestead/farmstead relief from 2017-18, 18 through 2021-22, was about 1.7 million, was provided from the state that we could apply to eligible properties for homestead/farmstead relief. In 2023-24, it was upwards of $2.5 million in homestead/farmstead relief that we could provide back to eligible properties. So when that number is released, we'll share that with the board. As we look at the 2025-26 budget cycles for our local school districts in the Burks IU, there's a number of different increases from 6.15% to 0%. There is one in the Topah Hocken area school district that shows us a negative. They're a multi-county district, and they had one, their Burks County rate actually dropped. We currently, in our 2025-26 budget, are proposed at a 3% tax increase, which puts us right in the middle of the Burks IU school districts. Some of the Burks IU school districts, like Mullenberg-Twin Valley, their increases are ever-fluctuating. Just recently today, there, I believe one of them may have, might have proposed something a little higher. So that's where we fall currently. I wanted to touch on the key mandated costs of the district. These are districts, these are costs that the district cannot control. They are mandated by the state. The Peasars contribution rate and cost history, this is net of the state reimbursement. So every Peasars dollar that we contribute, based, based on employee salary, we get roughly half of that back from the state. So in 2015-16, the Peasars rate was 4.78% for that year, which gave the district a net cost of $6,483,205. In 2023-24, the rate was 34%, and our net Peasars cost was $8,453,874. For 2024-25, the rate is 33.9%, and then for the budget year of 2025-26, the certified employer contribution rate is 34%. Charter school tuition is another mandated cost, a cost that is out of our control. We have seen 128% increase in costs since 2019-20. The, in 2019-20, we had 187 students enrolled. That tuition costs us $2,536,702. In 2023-24, we had approximately 282 students enrolled, and that cost to us was $5,789,876. So a pretty substantial increase. In 2024-25, we currently have 286 students enrolled. So again, we've had 128% increase in costs since 2019-20. In 2024-25, this current year, we did receive state reimbursement of $425,833. We have received, we're expected to receive that total amount in this fiscal year as reimbursement from the state for our charter school costs. We've received half of that so far this year, but there is no state reimbursement in the 2025-26 state budget, so that was a one-time revenue.
Are we going to be guaranteed the other yes, or?
I, from everything we've seen, yes. So to move into the 2025-26 proposed revenue, local revenue includes a 3% tax increase, and total local revenue is budgeted at $104,250,999. State revenue is budgeted at $43,633,378, and federal revenue is budgeted at $867,154, for a total budgeted revenue of $148,751,531. Of the 43.6 million in state revenue, only 28.3 million of that relates to educational subsidies, our basic education subsidy, our special education subsidy, our Ready-to-Learn grant. Cost reimbursements, which would be the reimbursement we receive for our FICA costs, our Peasars costs, that is budgeted at $14,165,206. And then we have other state grants, which includes our pre-K grant, and other smaller security and mental health grants, for a total of $1,128,514. Within our budgeted state revenue, it does include Governor Shapiro's proposed Ready-to-Learn increase of $1,449,817. So while there was no charter school reimbursement proposed by Governor Shapiro, there was an increase to Ready-to-Learn of 1.4 million within his 2025-26 budget proposal. We have included that in our budgeted local revenue for 2025-26. As we talk about the revenue sources of the district, local real estate tax being a large portion of our revenue, the, I would like to talk about the proposed property tax and rent rebate that is also included in 2025-26 budget. So the state provides a property tax and rent rebate to qualified individuals. What the administration is recommending is that we mirror the qualification requirements of the state and provide a similar property tax and rent rebate to our community members that qualify. So the, the guidelines would be that they need to be 65 and older as of December 31. They would, or be under 65, but a spouse was 65 or older, or be a widow, or widower that was age 50 or older, or be an individual with a permanent disability that's 18 or older. The eligibility income would be total household income of $46,250 or less. The eligible individual would also need to either own and occupy a home as their primary residence and have paid property taxes on that, be a renter that rented and occupied the home, and the landlord paid real estate taxes on the property, or be an owner/renter that owned and occupied the home but rented the land. So those would be the categories that, of eligibility that somebody would need to meet to be approved for the state guideline, and our recommendation would be that would be the same qualification for the district. The income guidelines, the income guidelines have indexed up at the state up to $46,250. However, the state rebate amounts in the past were index, were indexed up to $31,010. At the state level, at the lowest income level, up to $8,270, the state rebate amount would be 1,000. The district, it would be proposing a rebate amount of $250. Up to $15,510, the state rebate amount was 770. We would be proposing 200. Up to $18,610, the state rebate amount was 460. We'd be proposing 150. And then up to the highest level, the state rebate amount would be $380, and we would be proposing 100. So what the proposal would be, that if they were eligible and approved for the state rebate, and they applied to the district, the district would give the eligible amount based upon their income that's shown. From an historical perspective, the state did release data on the, latest data was 2022, for state rebates issued to residents of the Boyer Town Area School District. There was a total of 903 state property tax rebates awarded to residents of our district for a total of $289,172. So that would be what the state provided. And then, from the rent, rental perspective, the rent rebates provided by the state to the Boyer Town Area School District residents was a total of 153 rebates, for a total of $84,187. At this time, when they released this data, the state was, had a limit of only $15,000 on the rental side. They have since indexed that up to $46,250 as an income limit. From an estimated cost perspective, looking at the number of rebates that have been approved at the state level, and then estimating some growth, we are anticipating that we would issue 930 rebates, property tax and rent rebates combined, and it would be a combined cost of $257,750 for the district. This property tax rent rebate has been included in the proposed budget as of today. Now moving into the proposed expenditures. The current 2025-26 proposed budget contains a number of new educational and student-centered positions. As for the teachers, there is an additional one elementary- As for the teachers, there is an additional one elementary life skills position, one elementary autistic support position, one elementary emotional support position, one high school autistic support position, 2.5 learning support positions that would be utilized throughout the district, a .5 ELD, one speech, two and a half elementary counselors, one financial literacy to meet the new state guideline, and then we would build in the capacity for two full-day kindergarten positions. The 2025-26 proposed budget also includes an hourly increase for support staff of $1 per hour. The 2025-26 proposed expenditures by major function for regular education, it is a budget of $69,232,927. For special education, it's a budgeted amount of $25,992,220. For vocational education, it's a budgeted amount of $2,120,269. Other instructional programs would be $233,073. Our pre-K program would be $576,316. Support services would be $42,781,844. Our co-curricular would be $2,289,716. And our debt and other expenditures would be $7,377,652. For total proposed expenditures of $150,604,17. This is a 5.79 million increase over the prior year, over this current year. This expenditure again is supported by a 3% real estate tax increase, which provides an approximate increase in revenue of 2.6 million. And the remainder would come from the increase in state funding and fund balance. The proposed expenditures broken down by the object type, the type of expenditure it is, 40% of our budget is personnel salaries for a total of $59,573,808. Our benefits, which include healthcare, employer, employer taxes and retirement, is $41,582,350 or 28% of our budget. Contracted services, which again would include Kelly Services, Crest and our other contracted positions, is $15,187,143 or 10% of our budget. Our purchased property services would be 1% of our budget, $1,111,422. Our other purchased services, which does include over $5 billion of charter school tuition cost, is 11% of our budget for $17,112,88. Supplies are about 4% of our budget at $6,763,046. Property or replacement equipment is about 1% of our budget, $1,772,478. And then our debt service dues and fees is approximately 5% of our budget at $7,501,682. As far as how does our proposed budget impact our fund balance, looking at our current year and then projecting out for 2025 and 26, our fund balance at June 30th, 2024 was a total of $29,150,590, of which $141,776 is deemed non-spendable. That is deemed non-spendable based upon the accounting rules for things like prepaid expenses and property, things you haven't spent yet, but you've accumulated on your balance sheet. The there's a $4.1 million that has been committed and $14 million that's been assigned for current or future budgetary needs. And then your unassigned fund balance is $10,908,814. Under school code of for a budget our size, we cannot have more than 8% of of fund balance of our budgeted expenditures in our unassigned fund balance. So if we look to our projected fund balance as a for June 30th, 2025, we are projecting So we have projected in our 24-25 budget that there may be a small use of fund balance, which would drop our assigned fund balance down to $12,724,234. So again, utilizing those funds that have been committed and assigned in prior years to meet our current and future budgetary needs. Looking out to a projected fund balance at June 30th, 2026, we would be looking at a ending fund balance of $26,023,38, which would be decreasing our assigned fund balance to $10,871,748. So utilizing fund balance, but still maintaining 8% with at least eight, no more than 8% in our unassigned and trying to build in the capacity for future programs by using some of that fund balance and some of those increases that we've seen on the state revenue side. The 2025-26 next steps for the budget that we would be proposing would be on April 22nd to adopt the 2025-26 proposed general fund budget. And then on May 27th, adopt the 2025-26 final general fund budget. This is one month earlier than we would normally adopt the final general fund budget, but with the number of positions that we need to fill from a teaching position and the number of vacancies that we need to advertise and fill, we would be requesting that we move up the adoption so that we have the time to secure the necessary staff for that 2025-26 school year. We will not know, you know, by May 27th, what the state budget will look like. We very likely by June 30th wouldn't know what the state budget is going to look like. So propose if we don't receive the increase that we're projecting in the state funding, that would just be, you know, utilizing more fund balance or decreasing, you know, spending in other areas to meet that. And that is the 2025-26 proposed budget as it sits today.
Questions for Mrs. Dennehy Cole?
Yeah, on our bonds, how much do we owe on the bonds and our loans?
So our debt services just over 7 million each year, just under 7 million each year? Let me get the total. I don't want to misquote. I can take other questions in the meantime.
I can fill a little bit of the the void while Mrs. Dennehy Cole finds that that response. I think you see here a couple of the the major cost drivers. You know, there's, you know, we're our Peasars is still a cost driver. We're we're at a point right now where our cyber charter costs are a a significant cost cost driver to us. And we're working on some plans of how we might be able to investigate that from a residency position a little bit better to work on on some of those reimbursements as a possibility. Right now at the state level, we did take as superintendents and as directors to take a meeting this morning from from some of our state organizations. The realistic timeline on a budget, as Mrs. Dennehy Cole stated, is probably not going to happen in in the end of this fiscal year. We'd be fortunate if we we see something settled by July, but we're not necessarily confident in that at all. You can see where the basic education funding right now is it's it's underfunded and our special education across the state is really underfunded. There are real drivers of 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 underfunding right now where they're really calling on local revenues to to assist in that. And that's a struggle and it's and it's a messaging that the organizations across the state are trying to really announce with legislators to to fill that gap. It's certainly not just a struggle here with many of those cost drivers that I just mentioned, but with many other districts here in the county and across the state likewise.
Mr. Upton Grove, to answer your question, we have a principal balance of roughly $81 million. The net principal and interest cost after our state reimbursement is about 101 million.
Is that for our bonds and our loan?
That's all of our bonds and debt that are outstanding.
But does that conclude the loans or loans?
Yep.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions regarding the budget from Mrs. Dennehy Cole? Again, the 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 recommendation from administration would be to bring a proposed motion, proposed final budget motion forward at our next legislative meeting at the end of April. Requirements mandate that the 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 budget sit for 30 days for public view. And we would, we've calculated those days to where if it were an affirmative vote approving a proposed final budget and it went on review for 30 days, we could move forward with a final vote of a budget at the legislative meeting in at the end of May. And again, as Mrs. Dennehy Cole mentioned, if the board were to move forward with the recommended budget, it would afford the administration opportunity to to get out in front of many other districts as there are many positions and it is a supply-demand market right now when it comes to hiring teachers and many other support. Ms. Daryl?
What are student-centered positions?
So they are would be teaching positions. So we really want to show that we're focused really on, you know, addressing student needs and really providing the resources that students require. We've, you know, seen a number of things over the years develop where we need more supports. So this really goes to the root of what we're seeing to get those positions to support the students.
Okay, how many of those are we going to begin? Or is that the eight you're talking about before?
The 13.5 positions would be what would be built into this budget.
And you say a dollar increase for support staff. Who's that all include?
So support staff includes all of our custodians, all of our administrative assistants. It includes food service. Well, they are support, they are supported by their own budget, the food service budget, but it would also include them with a dollar an hour increase. That would be included in the food service budget.
So we decide that about that?
It would be decided at the district as a whole. If the board approves that the support staff receives a dollar an hour increase, the food service fund would follow that.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Um, just one other note, passing the proposed general fund budget on April 22nd, should that pass, we still have the opportunity to make any changes in the revenues or expenditures prior to that final budget adoption on May 27th.
And Mrs. Dennehy Cole, we plan to come back with an update in May with regard to Homestead-Farmstead.
Correct. Correct.
One other thing I see in here, full-day kindergarten, when did we discuss that? Or what I don't understand how things go from maybe we should have this to now it's on the budget?
Again, this is just a recommended budget to you. You're going to hear in the next, in the next few minutes, you're going to hear a presentation with regard to the information and investigation of all-day kindergarten. We are going to ask for the board after hearing that presentation to and recommending for a motion as to whether or not we are to continue with the planning of an all-day kindergarten. What we've established inside of the recommended 25-26 budget are two all-day kindergarten positions to build into the the millage of the build the millage into the budget. However, if it is not an affirmative to move forward with all-day kindergarten planning, we would remove those and not and not have a necessary need to include those in there in building the millage. We're not looking to hire those immediately. We know this is a timeframe of all-day kindergarten that would probably take a couple of years to establish.
But isn't this kind of backwards? We're talking about financing and before we even discuss having it, we haven't had any discussions at all.
You're going, well, you have, you've had a a presentation already and you're hearing a second one in the next 10 minutes. You're going to have a couple of weeks to think about whether or not you want to move forward with an affirmative on the administration continuing the planning of all-day kindergarten and consider whether or not you would include that into the budget for this year. We can't, we're trying to be prudent with how we establish our programs and services. Taking on nearly 10 kindergarten positions, if you were to recommend moving forward with all-day kindergarten is is really not feasible in one given budget cycle. So we're trying to think about planning a a financial plan while we establish the types of programs that the board so desires.
So you would be doing this in part?
We're building millage into the budget in order to establish the 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 resources necessary to over the course of what we estimate would be two to three years of building in an all-day kindergarten program. So in the next year's budget, if you were to, or excuse me, into the 26-27, if you were to move with an affirmative of establishing an all-day kindergarten program, we would move forward with those two positions into the 25-26 budget. And we would move forward with additional positions in the following year's budget. We're not, but we're not necessarily confident that we would be able to provide the all-day kindergarten. We'd probably need one more budget cycle to then establish the millage necessary to have all of the the positions ready to be able to deliver them and 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 open that in a given year.
We can start with two classes?
No, no. Correct, yeah.
Okay, so if I'm understanding that right, you're putting it in the budget, but we're not using them, so where are you going to put that money?
The money would go to less usage of fund balance, but it starts to build the, you start to build the millage to support those positions because we're limited from an Act I standpoint, how much we can increase taxes or how much we want to increase taxes. We couldn't make have the board have a decision, say, we would like full-day kindergarten. That's going to require 10 positions. In any one year, we wouldn't have the revenue sources to support that. So you slowly start to build that millage in to support those positions at the point you retire, you would hire them.
But we're close to being to our 12 million in that budget, which is what we're only allowed to have.
We could, we would commit that for future for full-day kindergarten in the future, which we could do. At this time, I'd just like to recap the proposed property tax and rent rebate. We would work with Mr. Sultanik's office to create a resolution, should the board so choose, to accept the 2025-26 proposed property tax rent rebate, which would follow the state guidelines as far as eligibility. And then based upon the income thresholds, provide a rebate amount of up to $250, down to $100 at the highest income level, up to $46,250 for eligible property owners or renters. If the board is comfortable with that, we can work to have Mr. Sultanik's office create a resolution. This resolution would be for one year only. And then each year thereafter, the board would have to make a decision whether they want to continue the property tax and rent rebate program and whether or not they would like to see any changes in it in future years. So if we have like a nod affirmative that everybody's comfortable, show of hands. The, you know, the beauty of an annual resolution, it's something that can be analyzed every year. And should the district budget be able to support it, a recommendation could be made to increase that property tax rebate.
Any other questions for Mrs. Dennehy Cole? So the plan would be to bring forward a proposed final budget at our April 22nd legislation, legislative meeting for a vote, as well as a separate resolution for a vote in regards to the property tax rental rebate. Okay.
Where would the, when I'm looking at the general fund budget, fund balance, where would the $15 million come out of for the Boyertown Elementary for all the repairs?
That would come out of the capital project funds. That was. That was, that's just the general fund budget that you see.
Okay, so how much is in the capital projects fund?
We can present that at the May committee of the whole meeting when we bring back.
Before we wrote on this?
Before, well, the capital projects fund has nothing to do with the general fund budget. That's a completely separate fund.
Right, but we will know what all the money is in there then? We don't know tonight how much it is in there?
Well, it has been released to the board at each, in the weekly, and it was at the last board meeting. I can pull it up. Ms. Deroff, I can pull that together and email the board with that.
Okay, I just want to make sure that we have enough money to pay all this and where it's coming from because it gets confusing. It's like playing checkers. Thank you.
All right, that takes us down to item D. And again, we're shifting gears a little bit here. And we do have Mr. Jamie Lynch from CHA slash Dewey. We wanted Mr. Lynch to come and present and just give a recap again of the Boyertown Elementary School, its, both its HVAC and roof projects as we are recommending an agreement to enter into between the district and CHA Dewey with regard to the professional services for this anticipated project. So Mr. Lynch, welcome.
Good evening. Thank you very much for inviting us this evening. Chris Holler from our office is with me. He's been working with me on preparing.
Your mic, James, just.
Better, check, check. Thank you very much. Good to be with you. And as I said, Mr. Chris Holler's with me, who's been working together with us on the projects. I have a slide deck here that you have seen in past presentations, so I don't want to go through depth by PowerPoint, but I'll go through this quickly and you can, of course, stop me with any questions. This is the controller I would use. Okay? And is that forward? There's forward. So based on the study we had completed with our team, I think we came to the conclusion with you that VRF with DOAS, natural gas heat, would be the preferred system, similar to what you have in other buildings for the elementary school. We went ahead and took a look at the big box spaces in the elementary school in order to include them in the project and an upgraded building management system to replace the aging pneumatic system that's in the building. And then we also talked about the switchgear and the emergency generator, one which is very old, that being the switchgear, the other which is not code compliant, which is the emergency generator that would be replaced as a part of the project. And we put that together in an updated package for you. There again is the ancient electrical switchboard, the interior generator that wants to be upsized so that you have more of the life safety systems for the building on it. That'll be upsized and probably sit outside of the building in the finished scenario. We shared with you HVAC system chart that identified the benefits of each of the systems that we took a look at. We also took a look at the roof options. The roof would be replaced as a part of the project and combined with the project as some of the equipment for HVAC is on the roof. And we were looking at an EPDM roof where we can also bid an alternate for a TPO roof, which is similar as far as a single membrane product for the roof. And we've included for now the Mansard roofs. Those are the metal roofs that you see on Boyertown Elementary, but they are in relatively good shape. I would hope not to have to replace them because as you saw on the chart, they're awf-, they're awfully expensive. I think that they're in good shape and hopefully we don't have to touch them as a part of the project, but we've included them in the total project budget. The total project budget was distributed, and I know we can't read it on the screen here this evening. We were talking about an all-in cost on that budget of just over $15 million. This was all broken down, hard costs, soft costs, has the roof in it, has the generator in it, the big box spaces and the switchgear. Provided a timeline, this is a little bit more of a detailed timeline for the project, but if you recall, we would perform the design during this year of 2025 with the idea of publicly bidding all of this work so that we would do it in essentially two phases, which are two summers when the school is unoccupied. So the summer of 2026 and the summer of 2027. And the trick here is to finish the design in a timely manner so we can get out for public bidding as quickly as possible, providing the contractors the ability to procure the equipment in time for next summer. And with any project of this type, we like to get out on the street as quickly as we can so the best contractors that haven't filled their books for the next two years are ready, willing and able to be attracted to Boyertown's project. So this timeline really remains the same. Design would start here upon authorization and we would look to try to get this out on the street for public bidding late in the year so that we have a good period of time for procurement before next summer's work. The board also asked me to put an organizational chart together that identifies exactly how we would do this and how you would manage this and ultimately stay in control of the project, and so I provided that. Our team would be reporting up through Scott and Dr. David Heiser directly to you and also to your business manager on all items related to the design. My team is listed there with our designers who are doing mechanical and electrical design and also a resident project engineer who would be on site during construction to monitor the work of the contractors. I expanded this a little bit for our discussion this evening, just to identify the difference between the design phase and the construction phase. There you have Scott and myself and Chris and our resident project engineer who are working for you to put the design together. Once it's complete, we would go out for a competitive public bid in accordance with Pennsylvania state statutes for a roofing contractor, an electrical contractor, a mechanical contractor. On the left, you see that we're needing to be compliant with Boyertown's municipal code and they have a responsibility to review the design and issue a building permit for this project, so we're going to be complying with their requirements. We'll be overseeing the contractors in the field, but the way that we like to provide third-party testing is to hire a third-party testing and balancing agent who would work directly for you and do water and air balance testing for the contractor, rather than have the contractor do that testing himself. And so you have another third party working for you. So three contractors overseen by our resident project engineer, also subject to the inspections of the municipal code inspectors and with a third party who works for you that does the certification testing on the system. That's how we would deliver the work when it comes to construction. Just also wanted to provide you with a couple of examples of projects that were similar that have been completed in the exact same fashion in neighboring districts. Tracy Elementary School was a successful project in the Easton School District, very similar. We replaced unit ventilators with ducted VAV in that case, new interior and exterior lighting, central heating plant, new building management system. This is a project that took roughly nine months to complete. In the Bethlehem School District, we've done this in a number of existing schools, elementary schools. Calypso and Farmersville are most recent. Again, very similar, replacing unit ventilators with new ducted VAV, new air handlers, chillers, boilers. It all depends on the age of the facility. Another, the Farmersville is the most recent one, a rather small elementary school completed over a summer. In Northampton School District, two elementary schools, one that's underway now, were completed. These are ones that Chris Holler has been taking care of, so he's got experience in this realm as well. Out in Redding, we're replacing HVAC in Redding High School, if you're familiar. It's one of the largest high schools in the state. This is a four-year constant project and we're replacing five classrooms at a time on night shift. So you can imagine in an occupied school, the thrill of doing that project, frankly. Very heavy summer work as a result as well. Bucks Technical School is a large high school down in Bucks County. It's over 400,000 square feet, not 350, but we've replaced a good share of the rooftop HVAC units. We replaced the entire roof. We replaced the fire alarm and building security system and multiple other systems were replaced. These were done in three summers, in 2022, 23 and 24. So all projects that are very similar to what you're considering. With that brief presentation, I know that you might have questions. We've worked with Mr. Sultanik's office on our proposal, the subsequent agreement. Jen Hanlon's asked a lot of good questions and tried to incorporate a lot of the components that I believe that you've looked for in the past so that you have the necessary controls. And I'm here to let you know that we're ready, willing and able to both answer questions and get started with your direction. Thank you. Yes, sir.
Your heat, your heat pumps, do you have a backup for them when it really gets cold? Do you have a backup?
So it's a VRF system, very similar to what you have in the other elementary school. And so it's going to be a system that's absolutely capable of taking care of your heating requirements. As in other buildings, there's not necessarily a backup system that would be prescribed for a building. It's got all the capacity and horsepower it would need in order to heat the school even during cold months.
In cold months as far as temperature-wise?
Well, certainly we know what the temperatures can be in this neck of the woods. We have single digits and below, so certainly.
Not below, 20 below, we're in big trouble.
Well, single digits and below is what I identified, and so certainly, you know, these systems have been installed in the, in the buildings that I identified and others, and so we feel, we do feel confident. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
You said you're going to be hiring a third-party HVAC testing company?
Yes.
Wouldn't it be better for us to hire them? If you hire them, they're working for you, not us.
That's a very good question, and maybe I misspoke, but what we would do is prepare the RFP for that company on your behalf so that you could solicit proposals and they would be under direct contract with the district, not with us. So we would manage them on your behalf. That's a very good question.
Okay, so you feel this is necessary though?
We prefer, have you ever heard the term fox watching the hen house?
Oh, yeah.
If I get a third-party testing firm that can validate the work of the contractors and certify that for you, rather than having the contractor do that himself, I think it's a greater protection for the district.
If I'm hiring a contractor and he says he's going to do it, he better well do it.
He better well do it, but it's always good to have somebody watching and make sure that he does.
And you said you were going to have a project engineer. Now, that's from your company?
Yes. So Mike Hartney, who's proposed for this, is actually a master electrician, and so that's always a nice thing to have on a job site when you're doing electrical work. And he would oversee the work of the contractors, has done this on numerous projects in his 20-year career. So we feel very confident that he would be a great asset for you in driving the contractors as far as what they needed to do.
Is that the same thing as a clerk of the works?
Essentially, yes.
So you don't feel we should have our own for that?
That would be the representation that we're providing for you on your behalf. We will always report to you. We will give you regular updates. As I've said before, I'll be at your board meetings in order to tell you what's happening on the, on the projects. We always work for you and for your best interest.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Yes?
Okay, I'm very concerned about that because anytime we've had somebody work for you guys, nothing against Mr. Sheal, but he does not have the qualifications to do this. All you're going to do is, he's going to, basically, he's working for you. You're going to tell him you need to do something else and he's going to go to Mr. Sheal and Mr. Sheal's going to come to us and say, you need to approve this, they need more things. So we have nobody looking out for our best interest. Our best interest.
I'll be doing that and he won't be coming and coming to this meeting, I'd be the one that would be recommending anything associated with the project and we'll carry you through each of the details, every step of the way, in order to execute. So again, done it on numerous and dozens of projects in, in the past, and I have every confidence that we'd be able to guide you in the right direction.
I have, not saying you're going to do anything, but I think we need somebody to look out specifically just for us, not for you guys, because you're going to be looking out for yourselves first, not us. Sorry, that's how I feel.
Appreciate your opinion.
Yes?
Was there a, in any of the projects that you showed us up here that were just completed, was there a project manager from the school as what Ms. Nyman's suggesting on any of those, or was it all done as you're suggesting?
All of those projects have been done really the exact same way. There's a facilities team or a facilities director at Northampton, at Bethlehem, in Easton, in Bucks. We have always worked directly for that individual and ultimately for the board. In a couple of those instances, we're the, the district retainer engineer, and so we're doing multiple projects at the same time, but all of them have a facilities director that we report to and ultimately superintendent business manager and you, the board that we report to. Yes?
Okay, so who's writing, who's running the testing plan and the acceptance criteria?
So as the design engineer, we specify what the requirements are. So for instance, for water and air balancing, if there's X number of CFMs required in order to provide the space, whether it's supply air or exhaust, we provide that specification. The contractor provides a shop drawing submittal that we review and approve that demonstrates that his manufacturer is going to comply with that. That then goes to the testing and balancing third-party agent who is performing the testing and balancing, and he does the airflow test, reports back to us and you. Since he works for you, the report goes to you, right? And then we look at it together and agree.
Okay. Scott, have you ever done any air balancing? So you're, you're, you're aware of what you need to do and how you?
I had a balancing company come through.
Okay, how you do the results and you can review the results and approve them?
When they come through, there's a, there's a specified range you have to be in, as long as you're within the range. It's within that range. I mean, I.
So you can analyze them. So that, so that would be, that would go back to, what does, you, I'm assuming you have an HVAC engineer also, correct?
Yes.
They'll be review, also reviewing those?
Correct, yes.
And getting with Scott to go over those results?
Yes. So there's a couple of steps as far as quality control, right? And so you'd bring a manufacturer's rep in and they're to certify their equipment and do the prescribed tests. So for instance, on a VRF system, there's a pressure test for the refrigerant line that needs to be completed. So we, Mike, our resident project engineer, would be present when that test is done. It would be recorded. Again, the results would be given to you, they'd be in the file. All of those tests that the manufacturer does would be in our presence. Then there's owner training, so Scott and his team would come in. We would videotape the owner training, so you're learning about the controls, the refrigerant distribution device, the cassettes, how to maintain them, how to change filters in them, how to clear the condensate pans in them, right? And then there's the third-party balancer and he's confirming that the air flows are correct. So all of that information goes on file and is a record for you as far as the success of the project.
So, so all manuals and schematics are transferred to us at the completion of the project?
You own everything. You own our drawings, you own our files, they reside with you. Electronic copies are provided to you. You've got copies of all of the approved submittals and a very good record-keeping program as far as the things that happened on the project.
Okay, your, your WBS, you, when you're, you're going to provide us with a detailed daily schedule or how, how do you do your, how do you do your scheduling?
Great question. So we require the prime contractor, if you will, which is going to be the mechanical contractor because he's got the lion's share of the work, to provide the job site schedule and he would be the coordinator of the other two primes. And he would be the coordinator of the other two primes. So he's coordinating, for instance, the roof area is being covered, a new roof is putting, being put on, but there's a new roof curb that needs to go on. It needs to be cut, the unit needs to be set, it needs to be flashed. What's the schedule for doing that? The electrician, when is his, you know, the big issue is, is replacing that switch gear. The question is, how long is it going to take to get, right? So he's putting a schedule together that says, I can replace X number of unit vents until I need a power requirement. That switch gear is probably going to come in the second summer and be installed. And the same with replacing the emergency generator. So he sets that schedule, he coordinates with those primes. Our representative runs over top of that and asks questions every day. What's happening? Why is it happening? He updates the schedule on a, it's really going to be a weekly schedule update because there's eight weeks in the summer, right? I'm not going to go for a month and find out there's an issue. We have to track it every single day. So there's got to be a, a regular schedule update that says, where are we? And we'll also put together a phasing plan for the job. Where should we start, right? There's easy ones, there might be harder ones. What's happening with a summer program, if any, in the building? Hopefully, there isn't. But if there needs to be, can we work around that? And then ultimately, when that switch is replaced and the generator is replaced, power has to go down in the building. When will that happen? And how will it happen? Where does the gear get placed so that we can place the gear, conduit and wire to the gear, and minimize the shutdown so we could do it over a weekend as opposed to taking the school down for an excessive period of time? The last thing we want is no air movement in the building in the middle of summer when there's humidity, because something happens when that happens, right?
Couple of things that are important to us, or first, you've answered once, but you're going to have your procurement plan in place, so you'll be on top of that.
Yes, sir.
Secondly, is, is the scheduled dates of beginning and end are very important to us. So therefore, I would, I would think you'll have a risk matrix and recovery plan. Certain things like weather, you know, you lose two or three days from weather, how are you going to recover from that? And, you know, your mitigation, everything else you're going to do, that I expect we would see something along that line?
Yes. So that's important on the roof side. With HVAC and electrical, I better not lose days for weather because we're inside. The roofer does have to plan for inclement weather. And so there's a weather-based schedule that he puts together. And our spec specifically says include weather days in your schedule. Now, if it rains for the entire month of July, there's not a lot that I can do, you know, about that. But this is also a roof that can be replaced in one summer, right? I don't need both summers for the roof. I just need to figure out my game plan for how I'm going to add the HVAC equipment to a roof that's been done. And the big tie in there is your roof manufacturer needs to come in at the end, certify the roof, and provide you with that twenty and hopefully thirty-year warranty.
I'm just concerned our, our end date most likely won't be able to move.
And your risk-
And we can't, we have to make sure we have that in mind and make sure it doesn't get to a point where we have to have the discussion at the end of it on why we're moving our end date or how we're going to get around not moving our end date.
Absolutely. And listen, I do not want to ask Dr. David Heiser to ask for the first two weeks to be virtual education. I concur completely with you. As far as risk management, and you also mentioned recovery, I didn't, I failed to answer that. Our schedule specification says the moment that it appears to us and to you that the schedule is behind, a written recovery schedule has to be provided. And so whether it's a roof, an HVAC, or an electrical, those are the three things where the minute we sniff something that has gone awry, we're on the contractor and say, look, you got to come in, you have to have a meeting with us, we're going to grab, we're going to get, grab Scott, we're going to grab the team, and let's assess what we need to do. The other thing we do is, if overtime is necessary, especially in the summer, they got to work it. If weekends are necessary in the summer, they got to work it.
And how's the fee schedule work? Are we going on a milestone fees? Are we going on course, schedule cost-loaded, or what, what is, how are you, how are you going to collect the fees? This is all front? I don't, just wondering how you're going to do it.
It's not front, I promise.
Okay. I have to say that.
Absolutely. So the way that we do that is payments, as you're accustomed to, are done on a monthly basis. And, and right out of the gate, we ask for a schedule of values from each contractor. So they have to break the project down into labor, materials, and equipment. And so we pay for materials when they arrive or they're stored suitably and insured. We pay for labor when it occurs. And obviously, equipment is if there's a lull on the job, we're doing that. So at the end of each month, the contractor submits to us a pencil copy of what he'd like to get paid. We review it because it's broken down into each section of the job, and we can assess, are they done, are they not done? Ten percent is held of every payment in retainage. It's not released until the end of the job. And we're not front-end loading the schedule, we're not paying for things before they happen. It's essentially an earned value, schedule of values, right? So we're only paying for the work that is complete at, at that time. And then we share that with Scott, with anyone who wants to take a look at the payments. And, you know, in each summer, there's going to be one that's probably at the end of June, July, August, there's probably another one in September. And then if, yeah, and if there's a need, you know, for us to come in and do some work, as it always ends up, where they have to do night work for some reason, even during the school year, to clean things up. Or, as I like to look at it, I'd love to get in, in May and get things ready at night and do something that might give us an advantage. I want to hedge our bet to make sure that that completion date is met. Great, if we can come in at night, if we have permission of the school leadership and Scott and you, we'd love to figure out a way to faster, better, more, right?
So you've built that into contingencies also, then, correct? Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Yes.
So basically, you're our contractor, you're covering Boyer Town's back. None of your people are going to be putting a hammer or a nail, or you're charging us for any of your people to do any work, correct?
Correct. Look at these hands, they're, they're very saw, you know, we are not hammer and nail, I'm not putting the roof on, we're overseeing the work, we're your design professional. And, I'm sorry?
That's a bear sound.
But, you know, like Mike Hartney, who would be in the field, he was a master electrician. You know the name Al Borel Electric from the Bethlehem area, worked there for twenty years before he came to us. So he knows when it comes to electrical, when it comes to HVAC, when it comes to building construction, right? He comes on the job, he has immediate credibility because he understands what these contractors have to do, and he's driving them in the direction that is in your best interest. Get it done, get it tested, get it done right, keep the site clean, keep the thing orderly, and report to us regularly because we can only help the contractor that comes into our house, your house, in order to try to succeed.
Do you plan on having a site safety director or a site safety individual?
So in, in Pennsylvania, site safety is always relegated to the contractors. And the way that we manage that is we ask the contractors to provide you a copy of their site safety plan. The other thing that we do is write into the specifications a district safety plan for what it expects of its contractors. And so they have to comply with that safety plan. And under OSHA guidelines, each of these contractors has a safety officer. So on the roof, as soon as they get on the roof and they want to start replacing it, I should see flags around the perimeter of the roof. They should be set up. If we're doing work and we've taken the fire alarm down in order to do HVAC work in the summer, there should be an adequate fire watch set up by the contractors in order to do the work. So that's what we would look for.
You'll be overseeing that, correct?
We'll be monitoring their performance.
You'll be, it won't be up to Scott to be monitoring it.
I'm not asking Scott to take care of safety and prevent things from happening on the job site, no.
When you said it's up to the contractors, I just want to make sure that even though it's up to the contractors, it's still really up to you. Like, you're still going to, you still have some responsibility to make sure that's happening.
Yeah, when, when we see things, again, you have someone who's been in the trades, who's watching over, also our experience on these other jobs, guys, contractors, you have to perform well. Also, if there are kids on campus, if there are kids around the school, if they want to get that leg up on the work, the first order of business is everybody who walks on this site gets their clearances done so they can be on a construction site on which there might be schoolchildren. So that's the first part of job site safety.
Basically, all bids that come in for each individual part would be you, Scott, Dr. David Heiser, Mrs. Danicola, and the board. So we'd be making the final decisions, basically, on your recommendations, who to go with.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
With the upcoming tariffs coming in, are you thinking about where your equipment's coming from?
Always thinking about what the lead times are on equipment. And yes, the tariffs are always a concern, especially, how do I say this, in the manner in which they're being rolled out. We've all been through the experience of COVID, which was something that really drove the availability of product down and costs up. We're in the early phases of whatever this tariff process is and where it's coming from. To date, we've bid projects in the past three months, we're in construction on a number of projects. We are not hearing of the delays yet. So this is another reason why the timeline for the project is important, that we complete the design, get it out to bid as early as we can, give the contractors the ability to go and procure the required, the required equipment. The other thing is that's something that we take seriously with respect to what we're specifying. I don't want to specify something that is, for some reason, going to take eighteen months to get from an HVAC standpoint. A lot of the equipment for VRF is fortunately very readily available. So I think it is a reasonable expectation that we can get everything we need. Electrical switch gear right now and generators, you, you may know that that's been a problem for the past two years, even more, back to COVID, is how quickly we can get electrical equipment. And so now we plan for that. And we know that we have to allow probably a year for that switch gear to get here. So if we can order it and get contracts and shop drawings by the early portion of 2026 to have it for the summer of 2027 and install, that seems to me like a solid period of time that we should be able to get the gear for you. I hope that answers your question. I'm not too keen on what the financial implications are of the various tariffs that are, that are being proposed and how they're being implemented.
It's just a matter of where your stuff's coming from.
Yep.
If it's made here or somewhere else.
Various is the, is the question. The other thing is, in order to promote competition, we have to allow multiple manufacturers in the spec. So we find out after bids are received who the equipment is based on for the bid. And so then we learn about that. So in advance, for the manufacturers and the vendors of the big equipment that's in the bid, we do a little bit of homework to find out if it's readily available. And we'll advise you as we get close to bid, what we hear and any changes with respect to the impacts that you're speaking of. Yes?
I just want to make sure if we want to run our equipment at seventy degrees, that we're going to get seventy degrees. And we're not going to have a problem with them not coming up to seventy or down to seventy.
Wow, how do I answer that question?
I don't know. You're selling the equipment, not me.
I'm not selling the equipment, but I am selling the engineering design. Yes, you're right. So one of the first criteria that we look at when we work in the design phase is to identify the set point temperatures that are desired for the school in its occupied and also unoccupied condition. So I don't know what that is for you, and summer and winter are different, right? In summer, do we want it cooler? In winter, do we want it warmer? So first, we set that up. Then we figure in the design that we have, we're working with an old, older building. And we've talked about this before with respect to the windows and the exterior envelope.
On your RFP, does that include any insulation?
We're adding insulation to the roof, there's no doubt. No new windows, no new walls.
Does that go right out?
Well, it's not going to go right out again, but you have to size the system for the building that you have, and it wouldn't be cost-effective to start replacing walls and windows associated with the project. Just because we need a new HVAC system for comfort and electrical system doesn't mean that the, the bones of the building also have to be replaced. Most school districts would not find it financially feasible in order to renovate the whole building of that, of that type. After all, you have other facilities in the district that I know that you want to attend to in the future. So we have to be somewhat responsible. But back to your, back to your point, that's exactly why we're hiring a third-party to do HVAC testing and balancing, why we're having the manufacturer's rep come in and demonstrate for us and ultimately for you, that they can meet the requirements of the specification and build in contingency in the system so that it is robust on the coldest days, as mentioned earlier. And that, you know, some of the toughest days in order to, to provide good temperature are actually shoulder season days, when you might have high humidity in October and in late April. So that's what the system has to take care of as well. So I'm-
Do you have any more spec, any more questions?
Yes, ma'am.
Any further questions or comments from the board? I want to thank Mr. Lynch for your presentation and your responses to the questions from the board. And just a reminder to the board that we will have this recommended agreement brought forward in a motion at our April 22nd meeting for your consideration.
Thank you very much. Appreciate all of the questions and comments, they're all very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, that takes us down to our next presentation under item E, all-day kindergarten, as we had mentioned. And as the board's well aware, there has been an exploratory team commissioned by Mr. Stout and assisted by Mrs. Landis to consider the planning for full-day kindergarten. And they are here to report back on, a second report back on those and conclude those findings. So, Mr. Stout and Mrs. Landis?
Thank you, Dr. David Heiser. We are pleased to present this information to you tonight. It'll be myself and Mrs. Landis presenting the information that has been compiled over the past three to four months. So we are going to share with you the specifics of the planning process that have taken place. We had numerous meetings along the way, and I want to reiterate or say right up front that we tasked this committee with not coming up with a recommendation for all-day K. We tasked this committee with coming up with the data to give the background information to consider all-day K as the, as the viable opportunity here within the Boyer Tannery School District. I will say, after numerous committee meetings, it was pretty evident that there seemed to be a pretty resounding look for all-day K in our district, but that was not the goal of what we set out to do. So our four identified goals were to collaboratively explore the implementation of a full-day kindergarten program, to identify key considerations for a successful transition, identify key considerations for a successful transition, which was the second step, specifically focused on staffing, space, schedules, and supplies. I call that the four S's of all-day K. And then finally, our next steps. The meeting dates, this started actually back in January, and I think we had a weather, weather delay in one of our days. So our first committee meeting was actually February 5th, and then we met again on February 20th. Those committee meetings were consisted of a team that Mrs. Landis is going to share with you shortly. And then we met again on March 5th with our committee, with kindergarten teachers, the readings, all kindergarten teachers within the district, the reading specialists within the district, and the intervention teachers within the district. So that was our final kind of large group committee meeting, and then we compiled the committee together one last time on March 20th to go over our results and work on the presentation that we knew our goal was for this board meeting to be presented. Whoops, whoops, sorry about that.
For the three meetings of the committee that Mr. Stout had mentioned, you can see here a list of those who participated in that. So we had representation from central office, including Mrs. Danicola as the chief financial officer, and Mr. Hahn as the chief human resources officer, in addition to Mr. Stout and myself. We also had Dr. Horton, who's here this evening, our director of pupil services, and Mrs. Bartman, our director of special education, who's here tonight as well. Mr. Sheil, our director of facilities, was a part of that because as we explored those different areas of, of space, we wanted to definitely have his input. We also included stakeholders such as Mrs. Clinton from Food Service, Mrs. Shade from our student, who's our student data coordinator, Chris Quigley from, from Quigley Buses- our student, who's our student data coordinator, Chris Quigley from Quigley Buses was there to discuss transportation and the impact of that. And then we had several teacher representatives. We had every building, every elementary school building was represented by someone. So we had two principals from two of our elementary schools. Then we had some kindergarten teachers, a reading specialist, and a special area teacher as well, because those areas are, would be impacted by a potential increase in classes that they would be seeing with having full day kindergarten if that were to come about. Our curriculum supervisors were also part of the committee, as well as our elementary special education supervisor. And then as Mr. Stout said, we had those three, that one particular meeting where we took from what we had discussed at the three smaller meetings and spoke with all of our kindergarten teachers, as well as our reading specialists and intervention teachers. And you'll see a little later on some survey data that we collected from all of them as well, so that everyone's input and voices were heard. When we had our first meeting, one of the first things that we did was set the stage and look at some different articles. These articles had been provided to you in the past as some different resources for you to take a look at as well. We found that the NEA article on full day kindergarten helping to close achievement gaps was a really good one, so we looked at that one in depth. But then this additional resource piece has a list of a whole bunch of different articles about full day kindergarten. One of the things that we found interesting as we explored those articles was that really almost all of them were at least 10 years old. And typically, you want to look at, you know, really current data when you're looking at research and information. But what we discovered was a lot of districts have been doing full day kindergarten for quite a while. We'll talk to you in just a moment about what some of the local data shows us about full day versus half day kindergarten in our geographic area. But there are a lot of districts around Pennsylvania and around the country that have been doing full day kindergarten for quite a while, which is why the data and the research is a little bit dated in that particular area. One of the other things that we did in that first meeting was some brainstorming about the advantages of full day kindergarten. So we looked at both the benefits and the challenges when we met with that smaller group, and then also discussed it again when we had that larger group with all of the kindergarten teachers present. So we kind of broke it down into a couple different areas as we looked at benefits. We talked about academics, social, emotional, impact on parents and family, and then what kind of school-wide advantages are there for full day kindergarten. And we recorded the group's ideas, and there's a link to that document as well. So as we looked at that and we broke that down into those different, those four different categories, we took a look at those. I'm not going to read all of them to you right now, but certainly that instructional time piece was something that we discussed. But one thing that was really key that all of us talked about that was really important to our kindergarten teachers was also that additional time for play and for children to learn social skills. And those pieces are incredibly important for our kindergarten students, so that we can, you know, develop them in a well-rounded manner and not just, you know, focus on more reading and more math. While that would be part of it and absolutely important, we also want to give our students time to develop appropriately. So play, discover, and exploration was an important part of what the team considered as well when we looked at those pieces.
So as there are always benefits to our decisions that we make, we wanted to make sure we took into consideration the challenges. So this first slide is going to be a comprehensive look at our initial group of challenges that we determined. We specifically focused on four key areas, the financial challenges, the operational challenges, the implementation challenges, as well as student well-being challenges. And we did an activity, that was an activity to break it into four categories related to district. Each one of those four categories related to the district, to specific buildings, to family, community, and any other kinds of characteristics that came up. I'm going to try to zoom this out. It's hard to see. Let me see if I can make this a little bit bigger. There we go. So we did the survey data, and we came up with the financial challenges, the operational challenges, the implementation challenges, and the student well-being challenges. So if you look, what was really nice about this, and again, this is from our initial planning process with our smaller committee members. When you see information in a graph format, there are certain things that absolutely stick out more so than others. And like Mrs. Landis talked about the benefits, I'm not going to go through each of the challenges, but a couple of the highlights of each area. First, financial challenges, we're staffing the actual classrooms. Dr. David Heiser made reference to that earlier when the question came up. You will see information a little bit later on that really, based upon our current numbers, we would need about 9.5 teachers to be able to staff All Day K. To put them in a budgetary process in one initial year would be very challenging. So to build that capacity within our financial constraints would be a positive way to go about this. And another one here was additional space was another huge highlight, and you will see information that Mrs. Landis is going to share with you a little bit later, because in our six elementary schools, we certainly have six different challenges when it comes to space. Another consideration with respect to that is, is we're looking to add those new classrooms in this budget. That taken into consideration with what space is currently available and what the board approves is also going to be considerations moving forward when we look at what actual space we have available within our six elementary schools. The operational challenges, the first one that really stuck out again was classroom space. It was kind of resounding when you look at, we specifically, and you'll see it a little bit later on, asked Mr. Cale and Mrs. D'Renzo to be a part of our committee, because at Boyertown L, as well as Washington Elementary School, those could be the buildings that face the biggest challenges to be able to fit All Day K into their buildings with their current makeup of classrooms that are currently in the building. Implementation challenges, this was a little more consistent as far as numbers go. Right sizing enrollment, you'll see some information a little bit later on. You approved an enrollment study, and I'm thinking is another area that's on the presentation later tonight, is to really talk about what the enrollment study process may look like moving forward and a timeline related to that. Because as we know, when we right-size, when it was pre-COVID and we had the opportunity and Pine Forge closed, we are now faced with new challenges as far as enrollment numbers within our building. So the enrollment study will be able to hopefully give us a little more clarification on what projections may be. And there's a couple other ones here that are concerns that came about implementation, staffing, the hiring challenges, additional resources, counseling, special area teachers, and things like that, depending on what our model of All Day K looks like. And finally, the, there was a concern that had come out from both committees with respect to students developmental readiness, to be developmentally ready to perform in an All Day K environment. So those were some of the areas that came about as challenges in our smaller committee. So we had the opportunity then, as we shared earlier, to have all of our kindergarten teachers at our, I believe, our March 6 in-service time. We had all of our reading specialists, and we had all of our intervention specialists perform the same kind of informational collection practices that we had done in our smaller committee. And then we challenged them to fill out the same survey information and come out with results. So the first committee results were 20-plus committee members that took it. This one was 44 responses. So overall, we had probably approximately 70 total responses between the two, but you will see consistency with respect to what the concerns were in these particular areas. Again, financial was actually staffing the classrooms with the additional space. Operational was looking at classroom space, the potential for modulators. There were hours for support staff, making sure that they had the ability to cover an All Day K classroom versus what we currently have with our current staffing. Implementation, if you look at that, the master schedule, Mrs. Landis is going to show you a little bit. We had the opportunity to evaluate what a pre-K schedule is within the Boyertownary School District, what a current half-day kindergarten schedule is, and we also analyzed what a first grade schedule looks like. So we had the ability on all ends to see what the consideration would be to make an All Day K schedule, because All Day K is just not about more work. It's about developing our students from a developmental readiness to have them be as best prepared to move on to first grade as we possibly can. Couple other areas there were right sizing enrollment, we talked about that before, and staffing. And this graphing element here looks very similar to what had taken place. In fact, the meeting with the kindergarten teachers, the reading specialists and intervention teachers, did have very similar concerns about developmental readiness of our kids coming in, making sure that we provide those opportunities to build their capacity as learners, so they're not, we're just, we're not just throwing a lot more information at them in an all-day format.
As we looked at different considerations, those four S's come up again, the staffing, space, schedules, and supplies. One thing I didn't mention earlier, in terms of some of the staff that we had available to us in our conversations, we had a few people on our smaller committee, as well as when we had that larger conversation with all of kindergarten and reading and intervention. We were fortunate to have a couple staff members who have had experience working in full day kindergarten and could lend that perspective as well. So Ms. Wazalowski, who's here tonight, she teaches at Middle School East, but in a prior role in a different district, she had taught full day kindergarten, and we have some other staff members who have done that as well. So it was great to have their input also. So when we talked about staffing, again, we had Mrs. Shade there, who does our student registrations, and so we had our current enrollment data as of February of this year. So we took a look at what our, what our current kindergarten enrollment looks like. And, you know, we notice every year that, you know, we get quite a bit of a jump from kindergarten to first grade, and then our enrollment tends to jump again from first to second a little bit. But, you know, just kind of doing a little bit of notice and wondering with this information and thinking about whether we would see that same jump if we had full day kindergarten, anticipating that there may be some families that choose to send their children to us rather than sending them to a private daycare or kindergarten program instead. When we looked at space, as Mr. Stout referenced earlier, we got some input from our elementary principals in terms of their current number of kindergarten sections and the projection of additional sections that would be needed, and whether they have the space in their building to accommodate these additional sections. Again, this is based on their current information, and as we look at the proposed budget and think about, for example, those additional special education classrooms that are needed as well, those classroom, those teachers would need classroom spaces also, and so that would even have an impact that's not seen here on this document that we need to take into consideration when we're talking about space as well. But as Mr. Stout referenced, Boyertown Elementary and Washington Elementary are our schools where we have the greatest need for some space in order to accommodate the things that we're potentially looking at from a kindergarten perspective. Here are the links to the schedules for pre-K, kindergarten, and first grade. Our pre-K counts program does have a longer day than what we currently have in our kindergarten program. So our pre-K, you can see their day starts with arrival at 8:35, and they are with us each day until 2:30 for dismissal. So you can see some of the different things that are built into the pre-K schedule that they have on a daily basis. And then our current kindergarten schedule, this is an example from one of our kindergarten classrooms. So, you know, for our morning kindergarten group, they're coming in at 8:45 in the morning, and they're leaving at 11:20 for dismissal. So their day is significantly shorter than the pre-K count students are. Our teachers do an amazing job of incorporating solid instruction for our students, as well as helping our students to grow into well-rounded individuals. But that gift of time is something that would certainly be something that many of our kindergarten teachers expressed, that they would appreciate. And then the first grade schedule just gives you an idea of what a first grade day looks like. Obviously, they are here all day with us, and they have a much longer language arts time, a much longer math time than our kindergarten students do, and they're able to build in more time for science and social studies as well, because they're with us for that full day schedule. And then in terms of supplies, we just started brainstorming some of the potential types of supplies that would be needed if we were to move to a full day kindergarten program. And so you can see here some of the items that came up for discussion, some possible steps and solutions that the group started to generate. And this is a piece of the process that if you decided you wanted us to move forward on continuing to explore this further, this is a part that would definitely be, become more developed and more thought out in terms of some possible steps and solutions and different resources that we would potentially have to meet these different needs for supplies in the classrooms. And now Mr. Stout's going to talk to you about next steps.
Okay, so the next steps are really the, what we're looking to possibly move forward, as Dr. David Heiser made reference to earlier. There has been a lot of time spent on the evaluation of this process to this point, and I think it's time that's been a great opportunity for our team to really, not only just look at All Day K, but really just kind of look at where we are as a district with respect to practices in our current setup. So these are the next steps that we're putting out there tonight as potential recommendations for us to move forward. Dr. David Heiser made reference earlier to the ability for this board to look to get a thumbs up to proceed with the plan for full day kindergarten. We're looking for that thumbs up approval, a motion as of April of 2025. The next piece of this, and Dr. David Heiser and I talked about this at length, is a feasibility study within the district. We would like to have a potential recommendation to move forward with a feasibility study for the district. This is compiled with the enrollment study that you have already gone through the approval process to do. The enrollment study will look at our numbers throughout the district to make a determination as to the appropriate enrollment environments within our community-based schools. The feasibility study will be looking at what do our schools have the capacity to do. So we're making these recommendations to move forward, but we would love to have some more detailed look at what our district has as potential options, because what I'm going to share with you here shortly is kind of a little bit of an outside-the-box to potentially meet the needs of the All Day K environment. The next bullet there is the results of the enrollment study that is in approval process is the summer of '25, so we'll have those numbers to come back to the board and share. But the next bullet is the one that's really that outside-the-box. As we look at what Mrs. Landis shared earlier with what the space is available within our elementary school environments, it's quite obvious that at Washington L, specifically in Boyertown L, we are going to have spacing concerns. And we had conversations about modular classrooms, and one may argue that putting a modular classroom in a elementary environment may not be the best practice for elementary school students. I would never suggest that, I'm standing here saying I would never put kindergarten students in a modular classroom, but to build space within the building itself, just to gain more classroom space, that's a possibility. But a very outside-the-box consideration that we put out there, and we had some preliminary discussions about this in our teams, is to really look at new grade level configurations across the district. And that would be to change our current elementary school makeup of grades within our six elementary schools and look at a possible K to four model. Take one of our middle schools, which you would need to have a capacity of approximately 1,000 students, and create a five-six building. Create one of our other elementary schools, whether it would be East or West, in a seven-eight environment, again, with the capacity of approximately 1,000 kids, and keep our senior high through a nine-twelve model. This would allow fifth grade to move out of the elementary school, which would give you all of the space available within the elementary schools to have a K through four model. You'd be able to maintain your special area teachers and keep the consistency there. And then create a one-Boyertown middle school, maybe a one-Boyertown intermediate school, whatever we would term them, but we'd have to look at some focus as to what those instructional models would look at at a five-six building and a seven-eight building. As I just talked a little bit about, the implications of having the new intermediate/middle school model, again, to be determined as to what you would term them, the focus would move then to what the scheduling process and the staffing process would look like in the two middle schools. I thought this was incredibly intriguing as we dug into data across the Berks County school, school environment, district environment, and also the Montgomery County schools. I know we are considered a Berks County school, but we wanted to collect data from both counties. And currently, right now, Boyertownary School District is the only school within Berks County that does not have All Day K. And in the Montgomery County schools, there is only one out of all of the 21 school districts in the Montgomery County that does not have All Day K. So out of 39 school districts between Berks and Montgomery, Boyertown and, I believe, Springford are the only two schools that do not have All Day K. So moving forward with the next steps, we would look to have the results of our feasibility study potentially available in fall of '25. As Dr. David Heiser and Ms. D'Anicola had shared earlier, building in the projected required funds into the general budget, we're projecting a potential of 9.5 kindergarten teachers, as well as a combination of special area teachers and a and again, depending on what that model would look like, which would have an overall cost of approximately $1.5 million, and we'd look to build that in over the next three budget cycles with a potential target goal of full-day K, full implementation of fall of 2027. So as it was discussed earlier tonight, this is not something that's going to happen in fall of '25, not fall of '26, but be looking a few years out so that we had all of the financial capacity to potentially build it in, as well as the feasibility to take consideration of space within our district. And that's what our committees, our two committees over the last so many months have determined as considerations for full-day K implementation. Any questions? Mr. Updegrove.
Did you consider busing?
We did. Mrs. Quigley was a part of our process. It's, and you know, it's, it's an interesting consideration until we would consider what would need to happen, because what, what would take place with all-day K is that we eliminate the midday kindergarten runs. As, as you, it's, in every building, it's, it's its own run. So the current runs that happen in the morning and in the afternoon already go to the communities. It really would be, do, do the buses in those environments have the capacity to have the extra students in those, in those spaces? So there may have to be some additional buses to happen, but there also would have to be less runs in the midday, because each building has specific midday runs that take kids home from morning kindergarten and then pick, they, they do a reverse run and pick kids up to come to afternoon kindergarten. So the actual financial piece of that and the number of runs would have to be looked at a little bit deeper, but we weren't quite sure what the, the end product of that would look like. Mrs. Nyman.
And you're aware of the time these kids are going to be on that bus if you're going to use the middle schools for 5, 6, and 7, 8? That's going to be a significant change.
That, that was absolutely just, and, and again, it was an outside-the-box way to think. You're right, when you look at going from, hypothetically speaking, if, if Middle School East would be a 5-6 building, and just say Middle School West would be a 7-8 building, and you're transporting students from Earl L. Elementary attendance area to Pine Forge to Middle School East, that is definitely a, a long, a long drive.
I'll make sure any phone calls I get go to you on that one.
They already do, Mrs. Nyman, so.
No, they'll really go to you now.
They really go to me now, Mrs. Nyman. Mrs. Durov.
So I'm like, sure, I understand it, but I think you just answered it. So you're saying, two middle schools, one would be East and one would be West?
No, we, what we would do, and this is just an outside-the-box spacing, you know, what we would do is we would have one middle school that would have all students in grades five and six, and we would have one middle school that would have students in grade seven and eight. So again, hypothetically speaking, Mrs. Durov, if we said Middle School East would house our fifth and sixth graders, all Boyertownary School District students would go there, so that you would have to have a capacity of about 1,000 students, because we have approximately 500 students per graduating class, so you're putting two classes in there. So each of the middle schools would have to have an enrollment capacity of about 1,000 kids. So there would be no more East, and their, East is, what do they say, West is best? Yeah, I don't, I shouldn't probably say that, but there would only be one. So, you know, so if you look at extracurriculars, if you look at all the things that go along with that, there would be a, a new planning process of what something like that would entail.
Hope you can run fast when the parents would hear that.
They just heard it.
So how many, have you done a, I shouldn't say a survey, but a count, on how many kids are in private kindergartens in the area right now?
Yeah, we have those specific numbers, and I think a reference was made to this earlier tonight. We do lose more than a handful of kids in the kindergarten environment, because the parents really want all-day K. So they go to non-pubs, they go to parochial institutions to, to go to K. So our numbers coming back in from an enrollment capacity, we're not even quite sure what happens in first grade every year, because we don't know who's coming back, and that's why you have seen us put some, some more strict guidelines on trying to enroll, because you may not be able to attend your neighborhood school, because it's just, there's too many numbers coming back. But there is the consideration, if you look at the big capacity of having a full class, you're probably talking a total of like 400 to 500 kids, because that's what our typical classes are. And if you, if you go back to what our enrollment, let me go back into our presentation, and we have our February enrollment numbers, you can kind of see what, what had taken place as of February 1st of where we were. So if you look at our current, our current kindergarten numbers right now are 400, where our first grade is at 422. It's 22 students different, but that, you know, the capacity of our grade levels kind of gains over time, because the first grade stu, the first grade students also don't necessarily come back sometimes until a little bit later on. So I, I think it's when we looked at, it's like 30 students max each year that typically go out to the non-pubs.
Because we're already looking at capacity issues, which I really need to hear more about, honestly, because I want to know where you're going to put them.
Right.
How you're going to get them there is another, is another big issue. Those two things are absolutely have to be solved.
Yep.
What, you know, you know how much I like studies, though. I'm a real big study fan, like not at all. I see you put down like the, the difference in curriculum for the kindergarten class where you've shown, okay, here's what half-day is, here's what a full day is. I think that's, that's good to show that. It's actually, actually really good. I would think what, if we're doing that, we're expecting the students to come out of kindergarten a little further ahead than they are right now. It's what, is what I would be expecting out of that. What curriculum changes are we planning on doing through first through fourth grade to take advantage of that, or are we just going to give away that advantage by fourth grade, which other initiatives like this have done? I can, I can name them, but there's initiatives out there have done the same type of thing, and by fourth grade, the gains are gone, because it wasn't used. So what's our plan on curriculum through one through fourth grade to continue to use the, to continue on with those gains so that we move and improve our first through eighth-grade capacity?
It's a great question. At the primary level specifically, we truly work to differentiate our instruction to meet the individual needs of our students, and we group students accordingly. I would love to hypothesize what you're saying, that the kids coming out of an all-day K program are going to be more developmentally ready for first grade, or more further advanced from an academic standpoint, and the first grade teachers would just make accommodations and adaptations and have groupings of kids that would be grouped in similar needs that would be very consistent across the kids that came out of our all-day K program. They don't, they don't teach to the middle, they teach to the, to the students and group them accordingly, and it really starts down in pre-K where, you know, they do activities that are based upon the individual needs. So as that trickles up through K1, 2, up into third grade, I would love to think that our bar's a little higher, and that we have, it's double the amount of instructional time that they get, and over the course of 180 days, that adds up to a lot of time that they have that, again, it's not necessarily doing more, it's giving it more focus and being able to build more of that instructional capacity within our students. So I can answer your question by saying, that's what, that's what, if you have a challenging class, our primary teachers meet the needs of those, those challenging classes. If you have a class that might be a little bit higher, they work very diligently to meet the needs of those higher kids as well. So it would be a very similar process based upon their needs.
Yeah, because theoretically, you're asking me to, to approve $1.6 million plus, plus, building costs and other costs. That being the case, I want to know what I'm going to see. Like, am I going to, what improvements am I going to see in the students as they move forward to that? Because I would expect to see improvements. Now, I'm not an academic, so I can't tell you what, what those improvements should be, but I would suspect that you, you or the group will be able to come back and say, here's, here's, here's the improvements you should see on how we're going to do it. I don't, it could even be something, we're going to, we're going to make sure our, our testing scores are going to fly up on account of that, and we can, we can see that will happen, because that's part of the problem we're having. So I'm just looking for what, what is the deliverable for the, for the 1.6 plus the building costs?
Right, and, and that's one of the things Mrs. Landis made reference to. We did specifically focus, and we grouped them, because you know, these are, these preliminary conversations to look at it, the four areas of academics, social, emotional, parent, family, and school-wide. What are the benefits of those pieces that come out of that? And if you look at that and analyze the data that the committee came up with, there are a lot of really strong foundational things there that do come out. The proof will be in the pudding, year one, year two, year three, and we compare instructional assessment data for kids coming out prior to all-day K implementation versus a full day. And, and you know, we, we tweak curriculum, we tweak, tweak schedules every year to really meet the needs of what the, the kids bring to us each year.
And I think that's what I'm looking for. Here's what, here's what our development was before, and here's how it's improved. Because some of the things I understand are aspirational, and they're, they're subjective, and you, I on the outside won't see those.
Right.
You on the inside will see that those changes are taking effect, and you're getting the improvements that you're looking for. But I'm just, want to know, we're going to, our overall outcome, what we're looking for is an improvement. If we're, if we're going to do this, what, what are the, what are the, you know, the, the kids and the parents going to get out of this? And that's, that's one of my concerns.
Right, and I, I could share with you, just in the, believe it or not, seventh year of implementation of pre-K, which is hard to believe that it's been so many years, but the developmental academic readiness of our pre-K students, because you, you have to realize that they're at a more at-risk population, hence why they qualify for pre-K, but the more developmental and academic readiness that kids are more prepared for all-day, for kindergarten, when they're coming through an almost all-day pre-K program. So there is data to support for those students coming out. So that, that's a similar one, but that's only a microcosm, because 54 students that are spread out throughout our district, so there's only going to be pockets of students that actually have data to, to compare.
So will, will there be some sort of measure we're going to do later on?
We, what?
I mean, you talked about before and after, so we are going to. We are going to have some sort of measurement to show that this, that this investment is the right one, and we're getting something out, or do, or do we have to change something?
We, we may have to tweak some of our assessments, just because they are, you know, the instructional model will look a little bit different for an all-day K program, but we collect a lot of significant daily formative, as well as some of the assessment data on our students to support our kids. So the data is already built in, we just might have to tweak what that looks like over time, because their, their instructional schedule is going to look a little bit different. So, yes.
And, and I think all valid questions, and I, I think from Mr. Stout and Mrs. Landis' perspective with regard to this investigation, we're at that point now, we don't really have the answers to many of your questions, and they would come in the study of what it is we're going to be able to design to, to do this. And some of that is, we need to go find that. Some of that's an investigation into model schools that run successful kindergarten programs in an all-day environment right now, so that we can replicate, look to replicate some of those designs, whether it's programs, services, unique attributes that those programs have. We've not taken that study to that level yet. We've given the, the, the larger cursory components here from, from, from teachers, folks that are in the classrooms, the interventionists, the administrators, and done a dive into some of the larger finances, and specifically what we can and cannot accommodate right now. Even the suggestions of some of the, the ideas of a 5-6 and a 7-8 center, that really, they're just almost, you know, the expression of spitball ideas right now, that we would need to conduct a, a very, very targeted feasibility study to suggest, we want to do this, and we want this to occur in specific ways. You know, what, you know, if we're working with a service provider, what are the three options that are available to us inside of, of a school district to be able to do from a standpoint of our, our building structures right now as they exist and so forth? So there's, there's a lot of really unanswered questions that need a lot more, certainly much more thought, much more study. You know, obviously, bringing an all-day kindergarten program in is going to require the metrics of its success rate through time, and there should be a demand on that from, from the board and from our community when it comes to that. We're, we're nowhere near any of that. What we wanted to provide, and, and hopefully for, for, for all of you here on the board and in our community saw tonight, a lot of the big things that are in the air. We gave some, some data. What we're going to ask the board to do is to take a motion at our next meeting to, to suggest, do we continue this planning? As you saw, we, we involved nearly 60 to 70 people at certain times in meeting structures, it was 25 to 35 people of significant, significant time to do that. And in addition to looking at some possible other targeted feasibility studies to, to suggest whether we want to do this or not, as you, as I spoke, and Mrs. Durov asked the question about the two kindergarten positions, as you saw in Mr. Stout's explanation of the finances of, and the FTEs involved, a financial plan needs to be segmented to build up to this. We can't handle that in, in all one year, along with all the other things that we certainly want to accomplish through the next few years as well. So we're trying to create that sense and, and put those two things in there. So there's a little bit of tie to the board suggesting, do you want to move forward with, with this plan? It doesn't necessarily commit you inside of that in a real detrimental way at this point, but it really gets us a lot tighter and more destined to putting together the design program that we think would be most successful moving forward with.
Okay, that's, that's pretty good, because what I'm, what I'm looking for is, is the next, the next meeting, you're going to ask me to give a heads, a go-ahead on something. I want to know exactly what I'm giving a go-ahead for.
The motion would, I, I haven't thought of the, the actual motion itself, but the motion would be to proceed with the planning of an all-day kindergarten program.
But no committing, no, no committal to that program at that point?
That, that's really up to the board to make decisions along the way. Our, that, that planning committee would continue to come back to this board and to give more desired recommendations. Right, this was not a recommendation tonight. This was simply, here's the information, here's what we found. We did find that through the study, and well, not a study, but through the efforts of Mr. Stout, Mrs. Landis, and the team, and the teachers and everybody, that there was an inclination and momentum toward, yes, this is the idea, this, we do believe this would build success in our school district, it would help within our family structure and our community, and, and we, you know, there would, there's momentum for that. Now, it's design the thing that we believe would be the most successful program out there. So the motion would be to proceed with the planning of that. It really opened-ended to that degree.
Okay, thanks, that's fine. Mrs. Durov.
We put this much effort into the, we have the space, we have everything, put this much effort into trying to bring the kids, like, say, fifth grade back up to where they should be, because they were all affected from COVID. If I have money to spend, I'd like to see us get those where they should be.
Recommended in this budget is a 13 and 1/2 FTEs that really are factored into, at most especially those, those elementary grade levels of, excuse me?
Is the curriculum, is that going to be altered at all to get these kids back to where they should be?
There's a number of factors that go into educating students, it's not just simply a curriculum itself. So the curriculum's going to continue to be evaluated through time. We're going to continue to measure our students' growth. We're going to continue to try to bring our size, caseload sizes down, whether it comes from a counseling end, from a special education end, in order to allow those students and all of our students the best opportunity moving forward. All-day kindergarten is just another piece of, of all the efforts in, in regards to that. So, yeah, I, I mean, that, those are all the elements that we're, we're working on right now, and that's part of not only future budgets, but this year's budget most especially. I'm sorry.
Is there a comparable, a few comparable schools that have had full-day kindergarten that we could look at to, because the big part for me is student achievement increasing as we, as we move along. Could we look at these schools that have had full-day kindergarten to see, is their math higher than ours? Is their reading higher? Are there?
And that's what we suggested in the next phase of this, was to move forward, if the board were to move forward with approving the continuation of planning of an all-day K, part of that is, I don't know that we have the answers to some of the questions that, that were asked tonight. We need to go find some of those models to replicate some of those successful programs and schools, so that we, we know in, in terms of those that have moved forward. Like I said, much of the research, many of the R- So that we, we know in, in terms of those that have moved forward, like I said, much of the research, many of the articles are decades old. Many school districts, including many in this region, have moved not just last year or two years ago. They've been going for, for many a year. We need to find those that, that, how did they transition? How were they most successful? How have they measured themselves and how, how has it increased their, their achievement?
That's the big question. Has it increased their achievement?
Sure. Absolutely. Yeah. And that's going to be part, that's the continuation of planning and study to be able to give back to the, get back to the board, some of the many answers of questions that were asked this evening.
Um, I know, personal experience, um, I do have a granddaughter that's in one of the schools at Springfield that doesn't have full-time kindergarten. Uh, we did put her in a preschool school. And she basically in first grade, she's testing as a third grader right now. So my belief is that it does work because we're adding 90 more hours of education for these students. The other thing that, looking at the other box here, and I think some of the counselors can say this. The students have a lot of time, the ninth graders curling into the high school because they're meeting all these new people. Where now all of a sudden we've got, um, fifth and sixth graders together that are going to be together for all the way through graduation and seventh and eighth, and ninth, 10th and 11th and 12th. So you're actually going to have students that are going to be together for, I guess, six years or seven years. So they'll, they'll build that relationship and have that type of, and that's other, you know, that's something we can take into consideration. I mean, that's important because they won't get that sticker shock going into high school. It's, it's scary enough, but, um, I, um, I know of another school district in the area that's kind of doing this the same way because they have an issue with space. And, uh, I'm anxious to see how that works out, but they're, they're, you know, they converted their middle schools into regulars, whatever you want to call them. Plus it helps with the sports too, because we talk about busing. You know, the sixth graders and seventh graders all play their intramurals or sports and they'll be all at the same school districts then at the same time too. But thank you for all your work. It's been interesting.
Yeah. And, and again, with the board, I, I wouldn't want you walking away this evening with the idea of that, you know, just a spitball idea has now become the recommended, um, you know, study of, of how do we adjust and so forth. You know, we need to do some deeper dives. I, we will, the administration will be coming back to you as a board to suggest and recommendations, possibly on another RFP that would be a real targeted study toward, how can we accommodate this from a facility standpoint? When we look at across our nine, um, our nine buildings and really assess how and what and where and why, to be able to do some of those things, along with looking at, um, other model school districts to, to find successful programs and how do we replicate some of the things that they've seen success with as well? So again, um, our movement moving forward is really to bring forward a general motion to the next meeting to, to ask for, um, the board's, um, approval to move forward with, with further planning of this, this type of program.
Good question. Do we start doing any kind of targeting for, um, the students that are in half-day? You know, called, like if they have issues, I know we probably don't do IEPs yet, but by then we're starting to realize which ones do need help?
So we do have students in kindergarten who have IEPs. Some of them come into kindergarten from early intervention, already having IEPs. Some students are identified with needs in kindergarten. We also, our intervention teams that provide reading and math support for students who qualify for additional small group instruction at the elementary, do provide those supports to groups of kindergarten students as well.
Yeah. And just to, to add on to that a little bit, the pre-K program again is, has been in existence for seven years. And, um, the purpose of it there is criteria of how you qualify for the pre-K program. So it is typically more at-risk students. Um, so it's providing more background, time, uh, the, building their normal capacity for what school's about. And, um, because we do it for a little bit of a longer than a half-day, but not quite a full elementary school day, it really does help to support kids coming in that might have a, a greater level of need.
I want to always to thank Mr. Stout, Mrs. Landis and the, and the team members that were, um, part of all this study. I, I appreciate and I think hopefully the board appreciates the amount of information. Mr. Upgrove?
Yeah. Um, did you use ever like, um, a hundred families out of a hundred families? How many of those would actually put their kids into an all-day? Did you ever do any kind of survey like that?
We did not put a survey out to our community to, um, to get a poll for what that would be. I can tell you through the strategic planning process and looking at data that has been compiled and having multiple sessions, all-day K has definitely come up as a topic, uh, as far as a potential desire and a potential need from that, um, eclectic group of strategic planning members, uh, but it has not been an official survey.
And thank you both and your team for the information. Thank you. Okay. Moves us to item F, uh, our guidance 339 plan. I'd like to invite Dr. Horton to the podium, our director of student services.
All right.
All right. Um, I, I'm going to go over the guidance 339 plan today. Kristen Horton, Director of Student Services. And although I'm presenting this plan for you today, I want to, um, share with you, obviously this is not something that I created on my own, that there were a number of people working on this, um, our counselors and advisory committee, um, that you'll learn a little bit more about. So the 339 is required by all school districts, um, to have a plan looking at the importance of career planning for our students. So what efforts are we doing as counselors? And also in our district, our teachers play a big role in supporting students to identify future careers and aspirations. And this plan is aligned to the Pennsylvania Career Education and Work Standards. So just real quick to look at that, the career, um, standards for education, um, cover four areas. That career awareness and preparation and career acquisition, which is getting a job. How do I get a job? So that first step is awareness. What are my interests? What are my skills? What do I like to do? Right? And then looking at how would I acquire a job based on those skills? Then we're looking at career retention and advancement, right? So if I do get that job that I hoped for, how do I keep that job? What skills do I need to have to maintain a job and to move forward in that career? And then entrepreneurship, those who are creative and looking to start their own businesses. You know, what skills do our kids need to have to go out and to be entrepreneurs in this world? So here are the components of the 339. Um, we're looking at career and technical curricula. And so really that's looking at what is happening in our buildings on a monthly schedule. What are our counselors doing on a regular basis to support students? Although it indicates career and technical, really it's all of the things that we're doing. It's meeting with students who need individual help. It's doing classroom lessons, um, all of the things that are happening on a regular basis. Looking at that specific career plan, we're using smart features in this district. So in Boyer Town, we're utilizing the Smart Features platform in order to ensure that all of our students are completing the required career artifacts from the state. And so if you look at us on the Future Ready Portal, you'll see that we do a really good job in Boyer Town. We have 98% of our students who are completing that. Um, actually a hundred percent. I'm sorry. I was wrong there. The, um, state is looking for 98% and we have a hundred. So we're doing a great job there. The plan also includes occupational information. And what that is, is really a list of external resources that we can use to help guide our students on their future paths. So when we're looking at these occupational and the occupational information and the external resources, we're sharing with students information on career clusters such as health sciences, manufacturing, engineering, education. And in that, we're sharing resources for community colleges, colleges, um, military careers and those careers. And we're providing them different links. So a big part of that is also opening students' eyes and showing them resources outside of the local area, right? That was a big part, um, of including resources from diverse areas states. Like colleges students might not naturally look at, just again, to broaden their world and show them what opportunities are available to them. So we have a big listing for our students and for our counselors to use when working with students. Cumulative records, it's a little misleading. You would think that we're looking at student records, but really what this piece is, is looking at goals. And so the counseling department created smart goals at the elementary level, the middle school level and the high school level, to show the different ways that we can support students in helping them to have success post-graduation. So the goals that the elementary counselors are working at, they're more based on that career awareness, right? We're looking at those beginning skills. What are the different careers out there? What are some of the things that I like to do? What are my interests in those basic levels? At the middle school, our counselors are really looking at how do I connect what I'm learning in school to the world of work? Cause we want to be making those connections to show what you're learning today can have impacts for your future later. And we'll talk a little bit more about that. That was a big piece from our advisory council when we heard, um, you know, how are we making those connections and showing students that what they are learning connects to their future? And again, those goals you'll notice are academic career and personal social goals that we're working on with the students. The high school counselors are working at attendance and truancy. They noticed that we have students, um, who sometimes come in late. And so that impacts their ability to be successful, especially at the high school. Our homeroom advisory period is where a lot of those career opportunities, artifacts and information sharing lessons are happening. So we want to make sure that our students are coming in in the morning so that they can have the opportunity to have that, um, learning environment. Um, orientation to career and technical options. This is a schedule and an outline of the different activities that we are doing to, um, bring awareness to the connection to BCTC. So this is where we're showing, um, our families and our students what BCT has to offer. We're having, um, presentations all the way down in fifth grade where the counselors are coming and talking to our fifth graders about what opportunities are available to them at the technical school. Um, so we start that in fifth grade. And then again, in the middle school, in our REACH program, and again, in the high school. So that shows what we're doing for our students, but also the open houses that the, that BCTC holds to inform parents, um, of, of the opportunities there. Um, career placement and transition services, these are just some of the things that we offer here in the district to help students look for their future and what might be a good fit for them. So we offer some college testing, those pre-ACT, PSAT and the ASVAB, looking for students, um, who are interested in military career. And we offer that here in the district so students can get a baseline on their scores to see what colleges or what opportunities might be a good fit. Also, we have our internship program, which is a great way for students to get a feel for potential jobs to see if it's something that they would be interested in, to help transition them into their future. Transition services for students with IEPs. And then the opportunities through our NJROTC program offer many opportunities for students looking for a military career. Students who do go into college and stay in the program have the ability to have a reduced tuition or get to go to school for free if they enlist. Um, and they also can enlist into the military, um, with a higher ranking. The other part of the plan looks at consultation with teachers and administrators. So how are we making people aware of what we offer? So we have the program app studies. We have information on our website. Um, we also for our teachers, we have the teacher in the workplace in the summer, so that we are creating awareness to different opportunities so people can come back and share those with students and, um, better explain what skills are necessary for certain, um, career fields. And then we had our stakeholder involvement. We had an advisory council committee in January. We had teachers, some parents, administrators, a board member, Mr. Upgrove joined us, um, from the BCTC perspective. And we had the opportunity to hear, you know, what were we doing well and what are some areas that we could grow? And again, making that connection to what we're learning in school, to the world of work, as well as increasing some awareness opportunities through career fairs, um, potentially at the high school and looking at that at the elementary school, some career awareness activities as well. So in a nutshell, that is the 339 plan. Um, any questions I can answer for you on that? And then again, here's just a listing of our school counseling team. If you're not aware of who everyone is, we have our elementary, middle school and high school counselors, and they played a big role in helping to put this plan together. Yes. Mrs. Dierhoff?
How do you determine how many counselors you have at a school?
Well, there's a recommended ratio from, um, the American School Counseling Association as well as PCCD, um, for tiers one, two and three. And the recommended ratio is one to 250, one counselor to 250 students. So we consider that, you know, pie in the sky and something to always strive for. And so right now, um, you heard earlier that there were 2.5 counselors recommended at the elementary level. And that's to help put us into more of the recommended range so that we can provide greater support to our students, um, to help them meet with success.
Well, Earls, what are the small schools we have? Do you have two counselors in?
We have one counselor there. They're both part-time. So we have two part-time counselors at Earls. Yeah. I should add that. Thank you, Mrs. Dierhoff. That's a good comment. Yes. Yes. Good detail. Yes. So both, um, Mrs. Miller and Mrs. Hummel are both part-time counselors. So they together combined to make a full-time counselor at that building, but each of them is a 0.5 position.
Okay. So they don't go anywhere else then?
Correct.
Is that the same for Gilbertsville?
Gilbertsville, Julie Weber is out on maternity this year. So Marion Elko is the long-term sub in there for her place. Sure. You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Horton. And just for the board's information, um, this plan will be submitted. We will need this to approval. Um, Dr. Horton, will this sit on our website at all? Is there any requirement for that to do it?
This is not required to sit for 30 days, like the special ed plan or the comprehensive plan. It just requires board approval.
So at our, our April 22nd meeting, the board will be taking a motion recommending approval. Take us down to item G, and that is the special education plan. Uh, at our last meeting, you heard from, um, Mrs. Bartman, uh, and shared the, uh, actual required every three-year special education plan. That plan, um, is on review and is viewable on our website. Must sit for those 30 days. We are going to be asking for, um, that to be approved at our next meeting, legislative meeting as well. Are there any questions? We do have Mrs. Bartman here in the audience this evening. If you had any further questions, um, from that presentation. Okay. Great. Well, that takes us down to item H. The board, I did share with the board, uh, the results of the RFP, um, and, uh, gave them a, uh, matrix of, uh, the scopes of services and pricing for all of those pieces. The board has those in those possession, in their possession. Mrs. Dennis Cole and I did make a recommendation for consideration for two providers, um, inside of that, um, uh, of those results. What I would ask the board to do is to give us some feedback heading into our committee of the whole meeting, um, in May. And my recommendation to the board is that you narrow the scope down to possibly two, or if there's maybe one additional that you'd like to see and hear from. And we can ask them to come and present, do a mini 10 to 15-minute presentation, almost an interview kind of style. They could share with you how their presentation and feedback for the scope of the study would be provided to you, show you some, um, some information on that. You can ask some questions. And then make a determination to bring forward one at a legislative meeting in late May. Most of those organizations, as you saw, their timelines are in that four to six month range. So taking that into consideration, that would take us probably to early fall sometime to get those. That would fall neatly into the scope of when we might look to do, um, some type of targeted feasibility study if we're looking at all-day K and neatly package and have that information so that we have some, some, um, some information, uh, late fall, uh, prior to the winter break to be able to make some more decisional things as it relates to possibly budget, um, and so forth. So thinking about that, I, I would just ask that the, the board, and I will put it on, uh, the committee meeting in May to, for further discussion unless anybody wants to discuss anything this evening in regards to those. Okay. That will take us down to, uh- Okay. That will take us down to uh item I. We have the Montgomery County Intermediate Unit Agreement for Student Services. This is an annual um contract that we do have with the MCIU. We do have two students in placements with the IU, along with, it gives you a schedule of services and the rates that are there. Doesn't bind you to anything that you're paying right now. It just gives you a menu of what those costs are. It gives us as a non-providing school, we fall outside of the county um for that so that we would pay a little bit higher than if we were, you know, inside that since we are a Berks County school. So this is a contract that we do need to have, and we will move down to the um legislative meeting at the end of April for your approval with regard to it. Are there any questions? Yes, Ms. Nyman?
You said we have two students going there. Is there a reason why they can't go to the BCIU?
Yeah, it's it's due to the nature of their IEP. It's been established for as their provider services and best fit for the needs and requirements of what they what they have within their IEP, that we found those to be such. Okay, that takes us down then to item J, the Proposed Berks County, uh Berks Career and Techn- uh Technology Center General Fund Operating Budget. This is the BCTC. Um this is again is their general fund operating budget. They're asking all sending school districts to uh to uh and recommending this budget. The increase for Boyertown, I believe I ran that, is approximately 3.7% increase from 20th or 24, 25, for the 25, 26 school year. It's about 3.7% um increase in cost related to its services. So we will bring that forward to the legislative meeting at the end of April as well. Again, item K, um this was a legal discussion in executive session, a memorandum of understanding. We are going to look to move this forward at the legislative meeting um later this month with regard to um said employee, and which was discussed in executive session. There are two overnight trips. There are two overnight trips. You'll see the STEM State Final Competition in which we do have one staff member, five uh five students attending. You can see the cost structures there, paid by what's paid by um uh the district. And then we also have a competitive, the PMEA, All-State Orchestra. And again, based on the teachers and chaperone requirements there, you can see that the cost structure regarding those two trips. Lastly, we have under item M, the BASD donation list. This is something that you're now going to see um being placed on all of our Committee of the Whole Meetings under Policy 702. Donations, gifts, things of that nature need to come through the board for acceptance. I, as the superintendent, w- w- they come to me under the board policy. I either approve them or not. So if they are approved by my office, I will move them forward to you, but those that you're going to be seeing inside this board meeting, um inside this document will be those that the district gains some sort of real estate value to them. And I've approved them, uh but also there is some fine print that often comes with some of those real estate values. The the items listed, if this document were to be open, and you see it on the screen right now, you'll see that there are three donations, one of which is flexible seating for a classroom at third grade in Boyertown Elementary School. Um I would s- suggest to the board that 10 years down the road, there may be, if we want to replace any of that flexible seating, since that is now property of ours, as soon as we take it in as a donation, it becomes ours and therefore you then take on the responsibility of repairs, um other sorts of things if there are. Uh but based on the value, based on the the quality of things you're getting here, I would highly suggest you accept this donation of $300 for that seating. Um the next is a donation, again, this is for books uh related to Josh the Otter. You heard about that already. Um and it's the Board of Town Rotary Club and their donation toward kindergarten and reading books. And uh the last is to replace some musical um accessories within our band program um at Boyertown Area Senior High School. And again, it's replacing some older mallets and drumsticks and such. So these again are be coming through donations. They're they're real estate value. You you now own them as a school district, so we're going to continue to bring these things. These are not what I would suggest high-action or high-level things. There are other things to which um we may approve and bring to you um that come with, you know, after a year, you may have to uh there may be software upgrades if it's some sort of technology. Um or you may, in five years, want to consider an extended warranty on a piece of equipment or something like that. So the 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 real onus of this policy is to bring attention to the fact that these are great donorship opportunities, but that you assume when you be when they're donated to you as an asset and therefore you you assume some of the responsibility, well, all the responsibility that comes of those things. So um we will work through some of these things out of my office and then bring those to you, so.
Ms. Updugrove, BCTC report?
Uh yes, I have uh BC students for the third quarter, high-level, 10th grade. Savannah Nagel in Cosmetology and Carly Hartman in Video and Media Content Production. And 11th grade, I have Connor Foskey Carpentry, Tyla Landis, Computer Systems, Network and Security, Laura Glacia Dental Occupation, and Galvin Ford Painting and Decorating. In 12th grade, I have Derek Kapinski Plumbing and Heating, and Colton Ebert in Welding and Technology. They were high levels in the third quarter at the BCTC.
Thank you. No one signed up for public comment period number one, so at this time, we'll be looking for the approval of the March 25th, 2025 Board of School Directors Meeting Minutes as presented.
Mr. Roger Updugrove? Yes. Mr. Zawada?
Yes.
Mr. Brophy?
Yes.
Ms. Duroff?
Yes.
Mrs. Kratz?
Yes.
Ms. Nyman?
No.
Mrs. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Brad Updugrove?
Yes.
Mr. Panarelo?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Takes us down to um item eight, the itemized agenda. Um I- uh under item A, Settlement Agreement for Student 250, 256. Again, this was shared with the board through its its weekly report. We are recommending approval of this item.
I'll second.
Mr. Roger Updugrove?
Yes.
Mr. Zawada?
Yes.
Mr. Brophy?
Yes.
Ms. Duroff?
Yes.
Mrs. Kratz?
Yes.
Ms. Nyman?
Yes.
Mrs. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Brad Updugrove?
Yes.
Mr. Panarelo?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Under item B, Personnel, we uh district is, the district administration is recommending approval of the personnel listed.
I'll motion.
Mr. Roger Updugrove?
Yes.
Mr. Zawada?
Yes.
Mr. Brophy?
Yes.
Ms. Duroff?
Yes.
Mrs. Kratz?
Yes.
Ms. Nyman?
Yes.
Mrs. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Brad Updugrove?
Yes.
Mr. Panarelo?
Yes.
Motion carries.
No one signed up for public comment period number two, so this goes to board comment. Mr. Updugrove?
No comment.
Okay. Ms. Nyman?
No.
Ms. Kratz?
Not good.
Ms. Duroff?
Can't miss a chance. Um I just want to thank everybody for all your presentations tonight. They were very interesting. Uh also, I want to thank Mrs. Landis because she's one of the few people that I can read a signature. I always check those when they ask for something. And you're setting a very good example for the children. Thank you. That's all.
Mr. Brophy?
I just want to thank Mr. Stout and uh
Because it was it was a great job, and I and I hope that the board took everything that you said and uh that we get this moving forward and start moving the district in the right direction.
Okay, upcoming meetings, we do have on April 22nd, a legislative meeting here in the Education Office um for legislative action. And there is a little bit of a gap. There's a three-week gap between the 22nd and the 13th, just to how the calendar sets itself up uh this year. We will be back here then on May the 13th then for another committee of the whole meeting.
Motion to adjourn?
I'll second.
Meeting adjourned.